So we will begin our special Board of Directors meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, very official. All right Natalie, so I'm Julie, we've met before.
Yes.
I'm gonna go ahead and let all of the board members introduce themselves to you.
Okay.
And we've got a series of questions to ask you and then we'll give you some time at the end to ask us questions as well.
Okay.
Go ahead Rob.
I'm Rob Perkins, I've been on the Board of Directors for just under five years.
I'm Victoria, I've been on the Board, I'm in my 20th year.
I'm Jenny Grunwald and I actually took Michael's spot, so I am the new board member and just finished my year, my first year. Congrats.
Okay, so I imagine that we'll just kind of go down the row and each take a turn asking a question and...
You can start?
Yeah, go ahead and start.
Okay, question one, please tell us why you decided to apply for this position?
Well, I actually toyed back and forth a lot, whether or not it was a right fit or not for me. I'm very involved at Y East right now, trying to help out there, middle school is very unique. It's a lot different from elementary school where I was president for almost five years, where you kind of had the realm, you had the support of all the teachers, you know, the principal you're very close with, in middle school it's so large and trying to figure out ways to raise money for the school is just different. And when the position, when Todd resigned, it just kind of seemed like it was something that I wanted to try. I'm really passionate about the district, I want to see it grow. I think it is the best district selfishly, as I'm in it, but you know, being that I had Michael firsthand, being on the Board for so many years, I got to see so many awesome things that you guys did and changed from all-day kindergarten was the first thing that I was part of, where my kids got to go to kindergarten all day, so different. And to be able to be part of that to me would be extremely amazing.
Great. What strengths would you bring to our Board?
Tenacity, passion. I am very involved in the community, everybody calls me as the she's got people. I seem to know people no matter where I am. For instance, right now at work, we're doing a, we did a 50/50 raffle on Valentine's Day and we're raising money for the conversation, yeah, I'm gonna say. The conservative center, the new day shelter. Which if you haven't been there, I highly recommend going, it's really awesome, they do a lot of really cool things. But, so I've been working with the community to get people to donate, we've got Homewood Suites and Orthodontist, we've got Bounce and Battle, so it's kind of cool to bring in the community and help them. So I think I could hopefully help educate, because I think as a parent myself, I think there's a lot of parents out there that don't understand what goes into decision-making, especially when it comes to teacher salaries and what goes into it. And I know firsthand after, you know, the strike this fall, trying to help them understand, because there were a lot of kind of false understanding of, you know, what was happening and I was really appalled at how much slander and how much negativity people were going, I mean, to your business and doing things that, like, it's just not appropriate. So, kind of went off on a tangent there, but I think that I can hopefully help educate also.
What goals would you like to see the Board set while you're sitting?
That's hard. That is super hard. So one that's kind of, and obviously this is all close to my heart because of the age that my kids are and so that's the most that I probably know the most of. But the two things that have kind of bothered me or made me question kind of, are there better ways to resolve things is one, the equality of sports, especially in secondary ed. As a sixth grade boy, there is very few things that the boys can actually participate in. And going from elementary school where they have recess, there's not a lot for them to do. And with Title IX, I understand the equality, but when middle school's incorporated in with high school and there's so many sports like football that take a lot of the players, there's not a lot left for the middle school kids to do. So that to me, I'd like to see more of an equality for kids that if you're a boy, you want to play a sport, you want to be a ballerina, you can go be a ballerina, if you're a girl and you want to, you know, wrestle or whatever, you can and somehow make that more equal than kind of the percentage that it is right now. And then I guess, again selfishly, just middle school in general. It seems like that group gets left behind, you've got high school where the kids are super excited because they're prepping for college and there's a lot of preparatoriness. Elementary school, they're extremely cute, there's a lot of bubbliness and everybody wants to go to those schools and hang out with them and read stories. And as I'm applying for grants and donations for Y East, a lot of people don't want to donate to middle school and I haven't quite figured out why. If they don't get the same feel-good, you know, they're not helping the child go to college and they're not helping the cute little bubbly one in elementary school. So to me, if there's a way that we could help out middle school, because they're going through such a weird time in their life. So those are two of the things that kind of come to my mind. It's a really hard question to think of, but selfishly with my kids' thoughts.
What experiences have you had on other Boards or in management or other leadership positions? And how do you see this role as different?
So I've been on the Foundation, the Board there, and I've been on the PTO Board. Both of those I would say are very similar, kind of in their structure. Similarity of, you know, having an agenda, having appointed, you know, positions. I would say the hierarchy is different, I mean, you're more in the public's eye, obviously, and instead of just being able to speak freely to whoever you need, it's always important, you know, to talk to the President and make sure and have everybody kind of communicate and go through them, so that's how I would see one of the biggest differences being. And, I mean, let alone the budget and the amount of people that you're overseeing is much greater than an elementary school or just the Foundation, so those are, I think, two really big pieces.
What do you feel are the top four issues facing the District?
Top four? I would say economics is definitely one of them. Such a broad, diverse, extreme right now and so much is going down with housing being so high. I think a lot of people are moving out of the District because they can't afford to live in it, which means we're losing people, which is making us smaller, which then doesn't give us the amount of funding. So I would think that that would be a big piece. Technology is another one, as technology is a huge asset, it is really important to have the fundamentals to back it, being training for all those teachers and resources for the students to be able to go out and look at and help themselves, you know, grow with those tools. Three... I would say teachers are definitely up there, just because there's different districts and people are starting to move outside of the District to go, so we're losing some of the teachers that have been there for tenure. Really good teachers that, you know, are going to some of the smaller districts because they get paid more, which is sad, to lose some of the really good teachers. I guess overall funding, period, I mean, as we saw this fall. Trying to come up with where the money was coming from and how luckily the levy passed. And there's obviously, you know, plenty of issues with the buildings that are, you know, scheduled to be built and how those are going to be done, so I would say that that would be a big issue as well.
Okay.
That was hard.
All right, so the next question is about time commitment. And so the question is, what type, what kind of time commitment can you make to work of the Board? Such as hearings, daytime school, student interactions, meetings to engage the community and two-way discussions about issues, time away from work to attend conferences, training and workshops. So in addition to our regular school board meetings, there's workshops, things that are scheduled on different evenings and we all try to get on the community and be involved. So does your schedule allow that?
It does, and I actually went and spoke to my boss before I even applied for the job to make sure that he was okay with it and, you know, approved of it. And I'm the marketing manager, so my job's pretty flexible, so, I mean, as long as it doesn't... There's a few trade shows that I'm gone for about a week and a half, but other than that, I'm very flexible, I leave, you know, during the day, I go up to Y East, like today I was there for two and a half hours, so, I mean, it's... And if I don't get my work done at work, I just take it home at night, so. And he appreciates being involved in the community as the entire company does, so that's not a problem.
Name the two strengths and the two areas of needed improvement for River View's District.
Two strengths? Say that the structure of the District, I think, is very sound. I was actually doing a little research and looking at other districts around the country and kind of even the structure of the different positions from the Board down and how you guys have everything laid out, it's definitely, I feel more structured than some of the other districts where they have a whole lot of people reporting to one person and it's kind of all over the place compared to, you guys have an elementary director, you have a secondary director, where in other districts, there's just one person that reports and that's a lot of people for one person to have to, you know, manage and look at. So I would say structure is definitely a very solid thing that the District has. And I would say the second one would be involvement. They try really hard to involve all demographics, having all ethnicities involved, making sure that there is equality. I feel very strongly about that and, you know, looking at the Facebook posts and even in involvement in the different schools. I was able to, at one of my past jobs, go read to elementary school kindergarteners and just seeing the different elementary schools and the diversity, you know, amongst them, but yet how they're completely welcoming. And going to different states and visiting, you know, my brother-in-law and sister-in-law in California, it's very different down there. So I felt blessed and fortunate that we have that, you know, up here. As far as areas of improvement, I would say one of the biggest things would be communication, which is a really hard one, I know, because there's a lot of stuff that the general public probably, you know, doesn't need to know the whole thing, but trying to get them to understand why things are being done and explaining, you know, kind of ahead of time, I guess I would say, in preparation for whether it be, you know, the school strike, or the teacher's strike, sorry. I just think that being able to have kind of a liaison or a person that... Which is basically what you guys are as the Board, but being able to share more on, okay, we're people too, we're involved in the community, this is why we're making the decisions that we're making, this is the best decision for the community and this is why we're doing it. Was that just one? I have one more, right? That's hard. And the only thing that I can think of, which it's now finally be done, being done, I was very excited, the District just approved for River View to have their playground redone, because I've noticed a lot of playgrounds around are totally not safe and crazy, I mean, they have wood, you know, that are in the play structures, the kids are constantly getting hurt. So being able to make sure that the kids have, you know, the best equipment, because especially in the elementary school recess is so important to burn off some of that excess energy that they have. And having obviously safe equipment where they don't hurt themselves is an added benefit. So, I know that's very weak, but it's one that I can think of off the top of my head.
Do you believe that once the School Board has made a decision, all Board members should support the will of the majority?
Absolutely. Sorry, that was so short, but...
If appointed, do you plan to run for this position in the November 2019 School Board election?
If I were to be elected, yes, for the position now.
If you were, if you were appointed?
I probably wouldn't plan on that.
Are there particular community connections that you have or constituencies you would represent as a School Board member? Do you see any of your current connections or associations as a conflict of interest?
No, because they're all school-related for the most part. If they're not school-related, their association's part of Homie Machine and...
Through your work?
Through my work, yeah.
Is your family supportive to your candidacy for the vacancy?
I would say 90% of them are. My mother-in-law thought I was crazy.
My mother still thinks I'm crazy.
Those were her exact words, I asked her on her birthday, I said, "I'm thinking about putting in my application." Which is crazy, ridiculous. Well, that's me. But yes, no, my husband and I actually talked about it for a very long time and thought this is the best opportunity to apply for the position this way, as, you know, a dry run, seeing, you know, how everything is and be able to come in. It was after the levy, which is nice, and not have to actually campaign for it right away.
Do you regularly vote in School District elections and did you vote in the most recent levy election?
Yes and yes. In fact, my kids used to take up the election forms to River View before they changed it. That was their favorite thing to do, they could get a little...
Well, you can't drop it, you can't drop it off there at River View anymore?
They switched it, it's at White or Elsworth.
Probably just based on neighborhood?
I think so, they might have moved one of their ones down.
So is there anything else about you that we should know in order to better consider your candidacy?
I have a heart of gold and I love to get my hands dirty and get in and... Might not be the smartest person out there in the entire world, but I love to learn and I love to grow and learn and try to represent the schools the best that I can. That's my passion, has been, I mean, ever since I can remember. As my mom was on the PTO when I was in elementary school, I would help her out and I just thought it was, you know, the greatest thing, she was a teacher, so I grew up helping her in her classroom and I actually went, I got my minor in secondary education and decided not to pursue that, but still have always had the desire. I mean, I was on the Foundation before my kids were even in the District, so. Something that I love to do in my free time and really enjoy it.
All right, what questions would you like to ask the Board?
Is it just kind of open or am I supposed to... I mean, should I specifically ask one of you or you can all answer it?
However you want to do it.
What has been the hardest thing you've had to do on the Board?
Obviously the strike was...
The work stop, which wasn't very difficult on all of us.
It was, yeah. Because, you know, we've had, we have relationships with our teachers and we don't like to be at odds with our staff and so that was a hard thing to do. When we had the Crestline fire, that was a challenge.
So you probably, when you had to go through the 2000 recession budget cuts?
Big budget cuts were really hard because laying, having layoffs is just gut-wrenching. You know, anytime something involves people, and especially our kids.
Right.
Those are the toughest things.
Well, because we're human, right, I mean, we all have feelings.
But I would say that it brings more joy and purpose than heartbreak and...
Right, there's more positives than negatives.
And there's nothing like the first day of school and seeing those new kindergartners come in.
I know, right?
And there's nothing like graduation, handed those, those diplomas out and shaking those kids' hands, there's something about it, yeah.
And the culture parade.
Yeah, and the culture parade is fun.
That is, I got to partake in that, that was super fun.
It's, it's learning about loss when we lose a child, which, it's a big enough system that it happens. Got stories this year about students who were this close to graduation and couldn't get approved across the line, that's a heartbreak. And it's part of the difficulty.
It's also been difficult telling, we've been involved with boundary exceptions over the years, for many years, and telling, you know, when there's all those circumstances that just, you know, legally or capacity and can't take it and it's just, it's hard, it's really tough to, because you want to do so much and we usually try to find solutions that will help the family the best we can, but we try to accommodate to people as much as we can.
I mean, you can't always.
Yeah, and it's never an easy no, ever. That's it. What's interesting is how, as large as our District is, how we personally feel these decisions, right, our kids, with our staff, they're never, they never, you never feel distant.
Right, but that's what's amazing and I think what is super cool about this District.
It's surprising.
They're, you know, I mean, both you guys have kids in the District, right? But you guys are...
Mine, also, right now.
So I mean, you know, half of you, you know, still are, you know, in the District because you have kids there, but you still are completely engaged and to me, that's amazing too. You know, because a lot of the Boards, they're all retired people that, you know, their thoughts are different, you know, they haven't been involved in the schools, they don't necessarily... You know, I do have to say that I do give props for Michael, that he loved going to the schools and seeing, you know, to me, that was awesome. That he liked doing that.
He loved those little kids.
He did, he had sweat, he still wears his sweatshirts from...
I think he had one from every school.
He asked me if I was gonna wear a Zip-Up hoodie today, I'm like, no. I try to not be the same as you whatsoever. So Jenny, being the newest Board member, what would you say is, or was, how would I word this, kind of your biggest surprise, like being on the Board where you kind of had your preconceived idea of like being a Board member and then once you actually had the position, what would you say was the number one thing that kind of went, ah, I didn't realize that, or holy cow, that's totally different, or...
I don't know that I'd say that there were any kind of real, because, you know, like you, I was very involved with other areas of the District and had a lot of connections and friends and... So I saw a lot of things, I think what I would say was the biggest struggle that I wasn't really prepared for was the, I guess, the, a lot of the stuff we do sometimes is confidential and so there's things that are happening and you can't, so it's the strike for instance, I mean, I've been on the Board for a year and look at what's happened in the last year. It's been interesting, but there's just so much that you want to say and there were so many times that I just kept, I was going to, and then it's like, no, this isn't.
Right.
Because there's, it seems so, you just don't, trying to hold back and trying to get over, trying to defend yourself, that was really difficult because it was a character assassination on some levels by a lot of people in the community that didn't really understand either and so that was, I think, the hardest part for me because of the relationships and the fact that, you know, it was kind of like we just had to kind of sit back and not say anything.
Right, because you really didn't get to do anything either.
And we didn't want to stir up everything else and it was just better, us saying, I mean, us getting out on social media would have just created even more havoc. So it was just, that was, that was very difficult.
Yeah, I can only imagine, I mean, I had a small bit, you know, of it, but not even to a close extreme because I just, you know, stayed neutral online. It's a very sad, unfortunate situation and I hope things get resolved soon. But, I would think, do a lot of people that know you guys, when issues like the strike, did you get a lot of text messages from people, like, you know, what's going on? You know, what can you share, can you explain things?
I had a mom call me and keep me on the phone finding the sources for the District claims for up to 20 hours. And at the end of that, she wrote a body of essays explaining financial situations and education funding. And so, yeah, it was pretty time-consuming to go through that. She was very, very interested in understanding why her friend was suddenly at odds with her other friends. She had situations where lifelong friends were walking away from her in church because they couldn't even, because of what she'd written. And it just kind of took me back to the, to the warning that we got at the beginning, this is that there would, there would not be winners, there would be no winners at the end of this. There would be a settled contract, there would be peace and people would go back to work, but nobody really wins, you know, Labor Action, that's a... No, it's a public municipality like this one.
What I found is, because we, obviously, in those few weeks, we heard from lots of people. We heard from people at NuMOS, we heard from many community members...
Well, they blasted it on Facebook while you're emailing addresses.
Yeah, we saw, we saw, you know, a wider range of emotions and we saw, you know, we saw people that called us and were like, you know, do this, do it this way or do it the opposite way. It was never, you know, it was all, all different sides.
Yeah.
But what I find, and what I find as a school board director, the most important thing that you are to do is to listen to all of the constituents and take in all the information. What people really want in general is just to be heard.
To be listened to.
Yeah, and then when they, when you take in all that and not have solutions for everybody, because obviously you can't make a decision as one.
No.
And then take in all that information and then come back and share it with your team and then hopefully that will help.
Right.
You know, if there's any, some ideas or things that we, we gather from the people we hear in the community, that's what we do. We listen to the ideas, we bring it back as a team and we try to keep making, keep moving the district, moving forward.
Right.
And that's really the idea.
Yeah, that's very true.
I can see that.
You do hear from.
Everything.
Every side and every opinion about it.
I can only imagine.
And that's the part that is most challenging because it's easy when it's, everybody's wanting the same thing.
Right, right.
It's when everybody doesn't want the same thing that, then the decisions become more complex. So, but people do like to be heard and they loved it when we call them back, you know, because my voicemail was full at home, you know, and my daughter was getting, she was there with me for a little while and she was taking lots of voicemails and messages. And so they would be shocked when you call them back and, and so, you know, you do as, the best you can with the sheer volume of people, but, yeah, they liked, they liked it and.
And most of us got the same message from, so it was kind of a divide and conquer kind of style and we were having regular meetings.
Oh, I'm sure.
You know, phone calls or whatever for support for us and.
I was gonna say, if anything, support.
Yeah, I had to bring back the ideas that the community was, that we were finding out, you know, the communication was a big one and so that we, you know, we started trying to change the strategy of what was being said, how it was being said and some of those kind of things. So there were, there were changes along the way as we were going through.
And it was interesting as different things occurred, like when people came to our businesses, that created a whole nother twist on things and we started getting, Julie and I started getting calls from teachers. We both did in our businesses. And so we started getting calls and stuff from teachers apologizing for that. And it was fine. I mean, you know, that was fine, it was a, you know, a conversation to have with people. You know, we, we were able to have a conversation with people and it was, you know, they weren't like at our offices being mean or, you know, just want to be heard doing anything and so, you know. So it just, it did kind of change the course of the conversation a little bit and, you know, so.
Whole life lessons, right?
Those are the things you live and learn and, you know, it was, it was a new experience for.
Something different.
Hopefully, we won't have to do that again, so.
The last one was in 1982.
Yeah.
So you think about these as things that happen every few decades in your area.
Yeah.
Well, I'm staying in Florida, it's been a long time, so.
Yeah.
I only remember the last one because I was in seventh grader that year or eighth grader, one of the schools and they, they actually bust us through the picket line in order to make a point or something.
Wow.
And bust us back home.
Unique.
Well, it hadn't happened since, so yeah, totally unique. My, I asked my parents about that and what they remember of the, of that period of time is that this time it was a lot crueler. There was a lot more cruelty and a lot more.
There was no social media in 1982, right?
No, you had to get on the phone in order to be cruel and.
The phone trees that went down and by the time it got to the last version, it was probably 1982.
The problem with social media, on the other hand, is that it did get out to a lot more people, but we also had people that were not representing either side, that were making inappropriate threats and things that were happening.
Well, just starting.
So there was just a lot of things going on that it just got way out of control and at some point, you know, there was no wrangling it back in.
That's the hard part of social media.
I think of it as something that's behind us.
Yep.
Because we love our teachers.
Yep.
We have good teachers in our district. You see them in there and that to us is the bottom line at this point.
Hands down.
And our teachers have a good contract and we want them to have a good contract.
Right.
And so.
But there also has to be money.
Exactly. So, you know, that's the balancing act that you always have is, you know, we're kind of at the mercy of what the legislature does and we kind of got short into the stick on the McClary fix.
Yeah.
So we're hoping there'll be a new fix to.
Hopefully, a much bigger.
Clear.
Be the third fix.
So, you know, but we're working on that and it's something we can work on together with our, with our groups. So that's what we'll be doing and so.
And that's the important thing is we continue just when it, when it was over, I mean, things, things happen and we just keep moving forward to make things constantly improve for district.
Yeah.
I just have one last question. So Jenny, since you were very involved in the schools before, being on the board, are you still involved at your school with your kids at all?
Not anymore. I did one thing at the school, elementary school and I.
Now, you have two.
I have three. I have one in middle school, one in elementary and then I'll have a kindergartner next year.
Wow.
So I kind of, but I, I spent five years as a P, in the PTA, so it was kind of my time was up. And then with the foundation, that was a conflict of interest and so I had to resign my position. I do miss that, but I have also had to pull away from some of that stuff as well, just because it, I mean, there's a lot. This month, I mean, we have these meetings tonight, we have more tomorrow night, we have another Tuesday. So every week, we're three to four, five hours. It, plus you got school visits and it doesn't, it doesn't become a lot. It can become a lot because you'll find, I mean, like, as a board member, I found that the more I was kind of there in the.
Right, it's just different.
It's, I mean, it almost makes them uncomfortable now.
Yeah.
Except for the ones that really know me.
Right.
And I don't want to do that.
Right, exactly, right.
So I kind of just pulled back a little bit. I'll help and I care and they know that, but I just, I don't hold them to leadership positions.
I think one, the important thing for someone that's considering being on the board is when you are a board member, I mean, obviously you're staying in that position, but you're still a parent and you're always a parent first.
Right.
And you always have the right to advocate for your kids and be involved in your kids' activities and schooling and so.
But it is challenging because every time we walk into a school, they see us as a board member.
Right, not as.
And so it's, it is a challenge at first.
I'm no longer the mom of Nathan and Alex.
Exactly. You're now a school board director and even though you'll still be treated as parents in your school.
It's different.
When you get new teachers or you meet, it is, I mean, it is, you are now a school board director and.
I witnessed that when Michael came as a grandparent, wanting to just come and see, you know, the kids at the elementary school, how teachers kind of treated them differently. I'm like, he's just Michael.
That's, that's part of the experience is going into a school and having them say, who are you again?
That happens too.
Most of them don't, don't know who I am anyways because I'm so new still.
We appreciate you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It was fun applying for it and it's been a fun experience. And I can go home and tell Michael that all the stuff that he like made me like look up and research, but none of that.
That he didn't need any of it.
And you understand, Elizabeth sent out the message with the timelines and how that will work.
For next week, that you guys are meeting tonight and then next week.
And then our meeting next week will decide.
Yeah. You guys have a lot of applicants, that's awesome.
We did and we had good, they've been good applicants.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, our area, I think there's a lot of passion of involvement, so.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you. Good luck the rest of the night. So you guys have your caffeine, so you're. I'll say, Victoria, can you do some coffee or something?
No, then I would be just like.
She will, yeah, she won't go to sleep if she does that. Did you really? I have to drink one on my way here.
I have caffeine after noon, after twelve.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
No, so we're not gonna.
You're not discussing anything here.
We're not gonna have a discussion.
Do you guys need to take a minute or should we come on?
I'm good.
Go to the next one.
One, ten minutes, I'll run that one.
Divya. Jane. It's worth asking.
Yeah, it is, she has an order on the.
Yeah, Divya, Jane is next.
Gotta control the time.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Evening.
How are you?
Hi.
Wonderful. Excited to be here.
Good.
Thank you for coming.
Like we just saw you.
You first, you said your first name Divya, right?
Yes.
All right. So do you want us to introduce all of ourselves? I think you know each of us, right?
Yes.
I'm Julie, I'm the board chair.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and introduce ourselves real quick.
Rob Perkins. Been on the board about five years.
Julia Bradford, I've been on for, going on 20 years.
I'm Jenny Grummel, I just completed my first year.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna just go through a series of questions and at the end, there'll be an opportunity for you to ask us some questions as well, okay? And we'll just, probably each board director will ask a question at a time and we'll start with Director Perkins.
Evening. Please tell us why you decided to apply for this position.
I'm very passionate about the education system and what the Evergreen School District has given to my kids and I always believe in a good education system that makes our community safe and it provides, it forms a basis and the education system is the kind of the foundation of, for the growth of our country. So providing them good education with all the best resources, whether it is teachers or technology or any kind of things. So all, everything altogether makes a big difference in our kids' education.
What strengths would you bring to our board?
I, first of all, diversity. I come from the diverse background and then my biggest, positive outlook is my biggest strength. So with that positive outlook, we, we train our minds and not only our minds, whoever we are talking with, we transmit the positive energy to the wider people. And with that positive outlook, we can, we can totally like change the whole environment. So, and then honesty and then definitely my passion and dedication and commitment.
Good, thank you. What goals would you like to see the board work on or set? What would be important to you?
Kids always come first in an edu, any education system. So kids are the most important, like their education, their safety, their, and it's not just their education academic, but education as a whole, because they, they spend a good part of the day in the school with their peer, with the teachers and all the, all the people that are helping them become a good citizen. So kids always come first, so kind of rounding about everything, what, I mean, as a board, I do understand that, yes, we don't have, we don't make any decisions on the teacher selection, but still like are, as a board, but the responsibilities are huge, but at a higher level and that's why every time it goes like that. So definitely would like to see how things are and currently, I don't know much about what the state, how the things are on the board, but definitely, I think, when I step in, I will learn and will, will be part of the team to make the best decisions in favor of kids.
What experiences have you had on other boards or in management or other leadership positions? And how do you see this role as different?
I was VP of Membership on PMI Portland Chapter and PMI Portland Chapter is also run by volunteers only. So I was, I was doing a, like, I've always been on the leadership, but not as a VP, but in the director position and then the directors report to VP. So I was, I was like kind of like open to, first of all, listening to people, listening to all the stakeholders, who we are talking, what they are bringing and how, what, what I can do to make things better. So whether it needs any kind of process improvement or anything, anywhere, whatever is needed, as a VP, I, I was doing it. And I do understand, the second part of the question for you, is I do understand that a school board director position is very much different than what I, I did before, but, and it, it has a lot more involvement, but I'm ready for it. I, I want to give back to the community what the, what my family has gained from, from the district. I want to give back.
What is that organization that you were involved with?
PMI Project Management Institute and this is global. They have chapters all over the world, so I was VP of Membership in the, in the local chapter, Portland chapter.
Was that a volunteer position?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, all the chapters are run by volunteers only.
Oh, okay.
You good?
Thank you.
What do you feel are the top four issues facing the Evergreen School District?
Actually, as I said before, I am yet to learn about the issues. But last time I was here, we were all talking about and kind of wondering if the levy will pass or not, so, and congratulations, we, we made it. And so definitely, I think funding is the very top on the list that I think, because every time we don't get what the state, what, what we need from the state and that's why we have to always get it through the levy and keep our fingers crossed. So that's the top, but I don't, I'm not sure if, if I know of other things. Maybe safety, as I heard of some other people talking, safe, sometimes safety of kids and sometimes safety of staff. So definitely making our, our schools a safe, safe place where they can learn and grow.
Okay. What kind of time commitment can you make to the work of the board, such as hearings, daytime school and student interactions, additional meetings to engage the community in two-way discussions about issues, time away from work to attend conferences, training, and workshops? So in addition to our, we have two school board meetings, there's lots of other things that we attend, including meetings, workshops, school visits. What's your availability like?
Yes, I, I understand that, and that is why I said I am completely ready.
Okay.
I want to give back to the community, so, and I do think, because in, I used to receive like good news from the printed version of the good news, and it's amazing, like, I always felt like, how you people have been going to the schools and learning more about all the schools and things. I, I just see the pictures, but I don't know much about like what you've been doing over there. So I do understand that, and I would love to visit the schools and talk to students and of all the levels, and teachers, or however I would be able to help the community, I'm in for it.
Name two strengths and two areas that need improvement for this Evergreen School District.
Safety. Safety, I, after a few of those gun, I mean, shooting incidents in various places, I would like to see like, are our schools safe, are, are the safe environment? And many times...
Sorry, is that an area for improvement, the safety, or?
Not exactly improvement, but first, before improvement, would, would like to assess, would like to see then, see the assessment. I mean, until I know, because I'm not on the board, I, I don't have any access to those kind of documentation that, so I would not say, I would not jump on improvement right away. Before that, I would like to assess that, how safe our, our schools are. Long ago, at some schools, some kids have brought some guns also, it was long ago. At some high school, something like that has happened, and they had to, I mean, it came in the, as a letter to us. So, would like to see and safeguard those kind of things, so that those kind of, our schools don't become those places.
Do you believe that once the school board has made a decision, all board members should support the will of the majority?
Can you explain more?
Absolutely. So, as a five-person board, if three people vote on something after we're, if we have a discussion, and three people vote on something, do you think that all five board members should support the will of the majority? So the three board members, or if they should still have their own and just go off on their own? I mean, I guess, am I explaining that?
So three voted yes.
And two voted no.
Two voted no.
Yeah. That's why it is always good to have a odd number, because...
Exactly.
So, and I always believe like, no two people will have exactly the same thought process, and the same, same thinking, or same, because everybody will bring something different, a different perspective into a decision-making. So, it's always fair, but we have to listen to each other before coming to a final decision, and definitely, yes, the three, if the three people have made, are for yes, we will have to cope with that decision, but kind of those three people have to make the other two people understand exactly why, why we are doing that, and kind of bring them in somehow. It may happen that sometimes they don't, but eventually, we are all doing for, for the good.
If appointed, do you plan to run for this position in the November 2019 school board election?
Yes. When I commit to something, I don't like to leave things in between.
Are there particular community connections, or do you have, or any constituencies that you would represent as a school board member?
I am not aware of that, but I, I mean, do I have to represent any?
No, no, no. No, I'm just, I'm getting, is there a...
And what kind of communities do you think?
Well, like maybe, if you're any community groups right now, that, you know, or any like...
Well, for example, the church that I belong to, I'm religious conservative, I bring that viewpoint to the board, that kind of thing.
Oh, but that's a different perspective. That's a different perspective that you bring to the board. So, I mean, even I go to community, religious community, which is, which has very few people here, but more in Portland side. So, it's all, I mean, if it is bringing a different perspective, and there's not, I don't feel anything wrong bringing a different perspective to the, yeah.
So do you see any of your current connections as a conflict of interest?
No.
Okay.
Does your family support your candidacy for this vacancy?
Absolutely, yes.
Because they, they have to put up with the, all the goings-on.
Well, my older daughter is graduated from Mountain View High School, but she was on the top, top five percent, and she is at University of Washington, Seattle. So, once she learned that I am applying for this position, she was very happy and was very supportive of her. My younger one is a senior at Mountain View High School. She'll be graduating, and that's, that brings me, and kind of that, that gives me more time to, to be able to be here. I will still be connected with the education system and not just retire with my daughter going away. And I will have more time to give to the community. So, definitely, and my, my husband is very supportive as well, as long as I'm happy with whatever I'm doing, he doesn't have any problem.
That's good.
Do you regularly vote in school district elections, and did you vote in the most recent levy election?
Yes.
Is there anything about you that we should know in order to better consider your candidacy?
Do you mean negative or positive?
Whatever you want to tell us.
Anything? Anything else?
Believe in your ownership with us.
Well, I don't think so you will find anything negative on my part, that's, I'm very, very confident. I don't, I, I give everyone the due respect, and so, listen to perspectives and people's voices, so I'm very passionate about the education system, so, I don't think, yeah. And I, very supportive, I am very supportive of any community, and connect them with each other, so that our community, or any person in our community does not stay alone. They are connected with each other, they are sharing the love and respect with each other. And when we are connected, we learn, and not, not only our kids learn, but we learn. So...
All right, what questions would you like to ask the board?
When will you make the final decisions? And I've heard of some kind of training programs or something that, how soon that would be?
Well, the board will make our final decision at our meeting, that's on February 26th, and then the person that is appointed will be seated at the meeting on March 12th.
Okay.
So I would imagine that during that two-week period between, that we would probably meet with that person and start doing some overview of the things that are being worked on. Obviously, you wouldn't be in an official capacity role at that point, but we would start giving material out.
Okay.
To help kind of onboard with that process prior to that March 12 meeting. Do you agree with that?
Yeah.
That's the way it happens.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, you know, and obviously, you know, you, once you're handed like a laptop or something, we don't expect you to know everything in all systems and access, so we would, we would set you up with a series of meetings with people that work in the district, and, you know, one of us would probably meet with you regularly, take you on some tours of some of the schools and things, and kind of get you appointed that way, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that would be lovely.
Yeah. We would try our best to coordinate all of that.
It's a little bit of like drinking out of the fire, fire drink, but it's, it's a lot at first, but...
Yeah.
We don't expect you to know everything right away.
Yeah, I understand that, and anytime you join a new position, a new company, or any kind of work, it's always that kind in the beginning. It's like kind of drinking from the fire hose.
Yeah.
But it definitely settles down, and it does goes like, yes, a new person does not get, learn like everything right at once. A person would have questions again, maybe later, as the things start becoming clearer. So I would hope that you would not mind me asking questions again.
Absolutely, that's right.
Any other questions for us?
No, I think, I'm pretty good.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Elizabeth told me that I can sit in for the rest.
You can, yeah.
It's a problem. Hey, Adam.
Hey, everybody.
Hi. We didn't know that, we didn't think we'd maybe have an audience, but we were kind of excited, we have three of you here.
Yeah, five years ago, nobody came to mind, well, Joan.
Not quite a packed group, but, but you know, it wasn't that many more for the city council planning process, there's only two people there.
I thought we maybe at least have one reporter.
Yeah.
I giggled when I saw that.
Yeah.
Probably have a reporter in the room next board meeting.
You know, we had one, when, shoot, what was his name? He was really tall, dark hair.
Oh, I know, just...
I know.
He wasn't mine, I had somebody come in.
Yeah, he, he came.
Colombian.
But he used to come to all of our board meetings and stuff, too. What was his name? I really liked him. And Tom Voight, when he was the education reporter, he used to come to everything.
Ms. Frances Gillespie's not here.
She's rarely does she come to our board meetings. Only if somebody entices her to come, and, or she thinks there's gonna be some, something explosive.
News values, as they go.
But it's very rare, maybe a couple times a year. I thought she might come to this, just to see who's applying.
I'm sure she'll be here on Tuesday.
She'll be here on Tuesday.
Maybe. Make the final decision.
Or she'll just wait for the press release.
She'll listen to this recording and then hear us talking about how we expect her to be there.
Yeah, we're still recording.
We would like for her to be, I, I think would be nice for her to be.
Want me to pause? Wait, we're just, we're just talking.
No, we're just talking. We're just waiting for, is Nicoletta Hall?
Yeah, she's not, well, she's not scheduled until...
Oh, until?
Six fifty, I think.
Oh, if we totally got ten minutes?
Yeah. We're taking a break this time, right?
Somebody remind me that I did.
I'm a mother, and I care about my kids again. I care about children and about their future, and I believe I can make a difference. I'm hoping to, to make a difference. I'm a, I'm a very good player, a team player. People usually like to work with me, and I don't know if, if looking for reviews, or peer reviews, or it's part of your, your process, but, yeah.
If you were setting goals for the board, what type of goals would you set for the board?
As a bigger picture is looking at the, the issues in the, in the schools, and then, but first of all, I would like to understand what's happening actually in the schools, and what are the major issues and major discussions that are happening right now? What the state has available for, for this region? What are the resources? And building up on that. Learning definitely from, from people who have been here for a long time, and actually they know and understand the, the big issues and major, who are the major players in the, in the region and in the community? And then drilling down to what the, what the schools actually need, right? I'm a big fan, and I'm a big advocate for, for safety and taking care of our children. We do have, and actually, I, I was part of creating and evolving this program that we have right now, is here, the Child and Family Program for Behavioral Health. I think I understand, I have a better picture, and I understand the issues that the families are dealing with, and then this is, is definitely the kids are taking this and bringing their issues into the schools. I don't like to use big words, but probably we have, you know, like, oh, good epidemic, that's, that's a big one. So, bringing back, and first understanding what are the, the major issues, setting up goals, depending on what the resources are, and how the state is looking, and what are the, what the state actually wants, or what is the direction that the state takes, and then using the resources available, and how we can better serve the community, actually.
What experiences have you had on other boards, or in management, or other leadership positions, and how do you see this role as different?
So, I've started as a, as a program manager, and then in about a year and a half, they, they promoted me as a South Regional Director. Currently, I'm in, on the board on the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, that is overseeing the activity. activity of the MCOs, the major managed care organizations right now here in Southwest Washington. I've been in a leadership position for the last five years since I worked with CIMAR. Also, we have been, I have been part of the advocacy groups through CIMAR. And for example, we have this big legislative days that where we are going into Olympia and advocating for medical and behavioral health. And I'm used to speak with leaders and leadership and how to put issues in perspective and bring up problems. And not necessarily problems, I would say solutions. So what is the solution to this problem? Mostly then, okay, we have a problem or we have an issue. Okay, that's, that's good. But how, what is the solution for that?
What do you feel are the top four issues facing the Evergreen School District?
Right now? Safety, probably, safety, lack of funding. Probably I will have to learn the other two, but for me, for me, for me would be the safety and the funds. And I will have to learn the other ones. I don't want to just put them on the list and then, usually I'm trying to learn when I'm coming into a board or like, what are the challenges? And let other people who have more experience and they actually are working in Evergreen to let us know, okay, this is an issue, this is a problem. We do have a contract with Evergreen School District and CIMAR has a place therapist in school district. So I know about the behavioral health challenges, but I would let other probably principals let bring their issues and this is an issue, this is a problem, this is what we are confronting. Instead of me saying, okay, this is a problem, listen to them and then say, okay, what are the priorities? How many we can take care of? Three, four, five? Sometimes you have a long list and then, okay, what would be the top two priorities? We have funding for two or one or four now, you know? Yeah.
What kind of time commitment can you make to the work of the board, such as hearings, daytime school and student interactions, additional meetings to engage the community in two-way discussions about issues, time away from work to attend conferences, training workshops? So in addition to our regular school board meetings, we have usually two a month, we have many other workshops and we like to attend things in our schools. And would you be willing to commit the time?
I'm passionate about that, actually. I'm passionate about attending and learning what they are facing, the issues. And once, if I'm committing to something that I'm really passionate and I'm really serious about it, depending on, again, on the needs and so I saw the schedule or what those days are for the board meetings, but I'm available, I'm committed. I mean, my kids, I'm raising my kids in the district, I'm raising my kids in the Evergreen School District. So I'm really interested in making a difference and setting up goals for their future and not only for their future, for all the kids and the parents who live in this district.
Name two strengths and two areas that maybe need some improvement in the Evergreen School District, as you've observed.
Yeah, yeah. Two strengths, I think it's, from what I know, it has dedicated teachers. I believe this is a strength. And dedicated staff. I've seen it working with our staff every day. I've done a presentation of our services, it was a couple of years ago, to one of the nurses, there was a bosses meeting. I don't remember what was the meeting called, but they had so many questions and so many, they asked me questions, so many questions that I, at some point, I was like, I will have to get back to you on that one. So that, for me, was, okay, wow. And we have other, we have contracts with other districts and I never got so many questions from them. So I was really impressed because of their care. So I would say that definitely that's a strength. I think it's a strength also the fact of the size, so probably there will be resources. But I don't know that, again, I'm not familiar with your financial. And then two, two issues that they are, right? Funding, right? That's, that's the money piece is always there and then, I don't know. You will have to let me know about that. Really, it's about, I will have to learn that and, you know, try to start thinking about that.
Do you believe that once the school board has made a decision, all board members should support the will of the majority?
Ah, yes, 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 absolutely.
If appointed, do you plan to run for the position in the November 2019 school board election?
I don't know. I don't know. What that will imply is like an election, right? So I don't know.
Are there particular community connections you have or constituencies that you would represent as a school board member? And then do you see any of your current connections or associations as a conflict of interest?
So my, I've discussed that I work for CIMAR and we can figure out, I mean, you will let me know if this is a conflict of interest for you. It's not from my part, but I don't know if it's from your part. You will have to let me know. And I'm open, I mean, for that discussion. It's also, I'm familiar with the Russian community, with the Romanian community, with the culture, absolutely. Through my work, I understand very well the Spanish community as well, the Mexican community, and the issues that they are confronting with. Yeah, I'm very familiar, behavioral health is there, so the issues with mental health and SUD, the substance use disorder, I could definitely bring an expertise on that piece. But definitely, yes, I would, I would really like to know about the conflict of interest before I move forward.
Does your family support your candidacy for this vacancy?
So here in North West, it's just me and my husband. So my husband supports because he said, okay, I think you should go, you should, it would be for you to, and I was, okay? And then I have two daughters and they will absolutely, they will have to support me. So yes, I do have the support of my family.
Do you regularly vote in school district elections? And did you vote in the most recent level?
Yes, I did, yes. Yes, we did.
Is there anything else that you, that you think we should know about you in order to better consider your candidacy?
So I'm thinking as, I was, like I told you, I was born and raised in a different country and a different culture and a different continent. So I'm really not familiar and I'm learning this and this is a disclosure because as my kids are growing, I'm learning the system as I go, right? So in a way, you could say, well, this is not really, she doesn't have the experience. In another way, it's like she has the fresh eyes and I'm really not biased because I, it's interesting, just recently, we find out that middle school is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In our country, it's the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. Okay, this is, I'm not going to say this out loud. So I think it's going to be up to you to decide if this is a, if it's a plus or a minus. I think it's a plus. It's sometimes, I'm not biased, I don't, I don't, I don't have the history of all the things that happened, which is good because all that depends, right? And then in the same time, I'm, I'm really committed to my family and to the, to the community. I don't have any strings or, yeah, history, political history.
Do you have any questions that you would like to ask the board?
What are the qualities that you are looking for in a candidate?
That's a big question.
For someone, you are looking for someone who, I don't know, you fill in the box.
I think we're looking for, I mean, I guess, answer for myself, I guess, somebody who would, who really would stand up and support education and be an advocate for it, to work alongside the rest of the school board leaders and our staff and, you know, really try to make education that's best for all of the students in the district. That's kind of one of the big initiatives that we've worked on in the last several years is our equity initiative and making sure that things are accessible for all of our students and that we believe deeply that every student can succeed. So we would hope that whoever was appointed would share that same vision with us.
No, I agree. And that there's opportunity here for all of our students.
Absolutely.
And our families. And that, that wants to be an advocate in the community. And we believe in our schools and we believe in our teachers and our staff and that we want this to be a great place to work and a great place to go to school and that our community believes in our schools. So that would be in addition to what Julie had to say.
And I think it's a very big, it has to be a balance between the staff and also the community and the kids. You won't have happy kids or successful programs unless you have happy staff and you know how to work with the staff and understand their, their issues and their problems. They are also parents, they have families, they have bills to pay, they have, yeah. And it's happening all the time in my, every day, as we are trying to serve the patients, right, with our clients, but in the same time, we have to notice this piece that is called staff and the platform of our organization. It's really, and we cannot thrive unless there's this balance. And we can listen both, we have to listen to the both parties.
And someone who can be a team with us, because we know one person is, we don't operate in isolation, each of us.
Absolutely, yeah.
And so it's important that we operate as a team. And we've been pretty cohesive as a group for a long time, so. Even as people come and go, it's, we've been pretty darn cohesive, so that's been really nice.
And I totally understand that, it's very, is that, right? If, okay, you're holding your breath, hoping for someone will be good. I know, yeah.
But then with also the understanding that we are here, we were put here by the community and the voters, so we are still elected officials, so we do still answer to the community as well.
And we like having different opinions and people that view the world differently among us. So we're not lockstep, you know, viewing the world the same way. So it is important to us that we are diverse and that's not always easy to find, so it's, yeah, so, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you.
We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you for, yeah, bringing me here today. It was very nice to meet all of you.
It was very nice to meet you, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Yes, do remind me.
We're all here.
Are we being recorded?
It's a public meeting, so we record it for.
Audio or video?
Audio.
Okay. That's, that's mine.
The video broke.
Yeah, our video's broken. All right, and you go by Andy?
Yes, please.
Okay. Andy, we're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves and then we'll get started. We're going to ask a series of questions and then at the end, you'll have an opportunity to ask us some questions, okay?
Okay.
My name is Julie Bokanabe, I'm the board chair this year.
I'm Rob Perkins. I've been on the board for about five years.
I'm Victoria Bradford. I've been on the board going on 20 years.
I'm Jenny Grunwald and I just finished my first year.
Okay, and then we're going to start with Rob.
Please tell us why you decided to apply for this position.
Well, I've always enjoyed the mentor-mentee concept from my, from my start of my IT career as I was the mentee and my supervisor was the mentor. Then as I got older and more experienced, I flipped the switch and I always enjoyed the mentor-mentee. I've always enjoyed the school board, the school concept. That's how I was able to get to where I'm at now. While I was going to college and I've always sat around the math lab, I've always talked fellow students around just in case they needed some help. October 2018, I reached out to the Vancouver Public School System to see how I can get certified to become a school teacher. And that avenue failed because they never returned my phone call after I reached out twice. Then this opportunity came up, so I go, let me go see what I can do to serve. I'm not going to throw anyone underneath the bus, so I'm not going to provide names or contacts.
Very wise.
What strengths would you bring to our board?
Even though I have an engineering background, computer science, IT, however, I'm also versatile in a lot of things, like I'm also a licensed real estate agent for Florida as well as the state of Washington. I'm very good in finance, so I bring a whole gamut of tools in my belt.
So what would you like to see as goals for the board? If you were just thinking about the role of the board, what would you see as goals for the board?
Provide guidance to the school district to ensure that the students, when they graduate, they have a leading leverage on excelling themselves within the public sector as well as into higher education, however they choose, college, vocational or apprenticeship programs or et cetera. Just give them the appropriate toolset so they can allow to exceed. Certain students can't always go to college for one reason or another. They have other path they can go to. Teach them that they can go into the, one of the armed forces and go that, down that avenue or go to vocational training or apprentice program.
What experiences have you had on other boards or in management or other leadership positions? And how do you see those roles as different than this one?
I've been in the finding committee within, where I lived in Florida since, before I moved here in September 2017. We were the largest community in Florida or as well as the United States. We have 5,400 homes that we actually maintain or observe. As the finding committee, I was the sheriff person for the last four or five years and where we ensure that the homeowners were in compliant with the bylaws and rules and regulations. We never find anyone. We try to come up with a solution or a compromise between both the, what the boards were going towards as well as the homeowner. The management with IT have always been a team leader and where I was able to play the role of IT project and where I provided certain individuals based on the skill sets, certain tasks. And sometime I've always pushed them to the limit so they can excel and to learn. And that's when I became the mentor and they became the mentee.
What do you feel are the top four issues facing the Evergreen School District?
One is trying to maintain the taxes to ensure that you don't overtax the homeowners so they're beyond supporting you guys. With the recent, when I came here, the next following summer, I've heard that the school, that all the teachers were on strike to ensure they got equal pay. that all the teachers were on strike to ensure they got equal pay. Supporting the teachers, ensuring that they have proper tools, learning abilities, programs so they can ensure that they can tutor our students properly. And the fourth one, I didn't think I could count it, I. Can I get back on the fourth one?
Yeah.
Thank you.
What type, what kind of time commitment can you make to do the work of the board? I mean, the board meets regularly, usually twice a month and regular school board meetings and workshops, but in addition to that, there's additional workshops or visits in schools, two-way communication with people in the community, school visits, do you have the kind of time that you could commit to the work?
Well, based on what I provided initially, I still work for full-time to a company located in South Florida and they're in the eastern zone, eastern time zone, I have to work according to the time zone, so I also work remotely.
Okay, so you're, you're not physically there, right? You're here, okay.
So I'm basically working 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM here locally. Since I work remotely, I can be anywhere I want to. Right now I could be bringing my laptop here and work and still be talking to this meeting, so I can be unflexible. I basically work on my own time, as long as I can get eight hours minimum, I can work. So I can take off for two hours, come back, work, et cetera, or work later.
Sounds kind of familiar.
Well, consequently, in nine days, I just completed my 90-hour CU course for my renewing my Washington license for the first time, so I did that in nine days while I was working.
The Realtor license?
Yeah. So I was able to multitask, I'm very good in multitasking as well as time management.
I'm a home office employee for an eastern time zone company, same thing.
I work Fortune 500.
Oh, no, Fortune like 57,000. But yeah, it's nice to have that flexibility.
And also I do a lot of teleconference and all, so I'm very good at that.
You probably set it up as the IT guy, right?
Not really, I didn't do that type. I'm not into the communication network, I just know how to use it.
Name two strengths and two areas that need improvement for the school district.
That's part of his.
Yeah, he asked the issues and.
Yeah, which issues are facing us now? How is the district strong and where could it improve?
Can I have that subconsciously thinking while I answer that so I can ensure a proper answer?
Sure.
Don't, don't think I'll forget.
Okay.
I won't. You want the two issues or the two strengths or both?
Two strengths and then two areas that need improvement.
Do you want to come back to my question then?
Sure.
Do you believe that once the school board has made a decision, all board members should support the will of the majority?
Yes, in public. I read that in your bylaws, by the way. Privately, you can discuss your different opinion, but in public you have to always support what the president supports.
The majority supports.
Yeah, if I, you know, if it was with the president's support, but no, that's not how it works. And if I member board, you know, it has to be the majority of, there's like not one person.
I'm surprised the fifth guy is not, he's the one that's leading.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's already gone.
Yeah.
Oh, he's gone already?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you resign your position, you don't get to help pick the next person. You're not in the position. No, that's a process that's laid out in statute, so.
Oh, right.
If appointed, do you plan to run for the position in the November 2019 school board election?
That's a good question, I was thinking about that. Since I have to take out all my funds, that's not a problem, I may, I will consider it as a passive campaign where I'll just probably put out cardboard bulletins and all that and go into any meetings or debate that is out there, but not proactively.
Do you file for the office?
No, I have not.
Oh, no, no, what I mean is, you know, come May or early June, there'll be a filing week and that's when you register as a candidate.
I'll file, I'll do all proper paperwork, but that's my goal, but not in a way that I'm going to spend $100,000 or a billion dollars to win a campaign.
No, you only need that kind of money for the poor.
But yes, I would like to further, but if I lose, it's not like I, I lost or, or I'm a failure, put it this way.
Are there particular community connections that you have or that you would represent as a school board member and do you see any of your current connections or associations as a conflict of interest?
I can tell you I have no conflict of interest, I have no alliance with anyone at all, since I, my employer is out there in the East Coast, that's far, far away and it takes a high amount of money to buy me out anyway, so I'm thinking I'll have any conflict of interest at all. For me, money is not an issue, so they have to come up with a billion dollar to even come close to one.
Are you involved in any community groups right now?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Not, not locally.
Okay.
I moved here September 2017, so I haven't yet put foot in, put into here. The only thing that my, my wife has joined the bizarre Christmas thing that she's doing their own jewelry selling, but that's it.
Well, does your family support your candidacy for the vacancy?
Yes, yes, as well as my dogs.
Do you regularly vote in school district elections and did you vote in the most recent levy election?
Yes, I did. Do you want to know what I voted, I'll tell you, I have nothing to hide, I'm an open book. So you don't have to ask.
We'd just like to know that people participate.
I did, I did vote. Yeah, but I'm just curious, who came up with the, with those percentage, those increases year over year, the 2.7, the 2.8 and all that? Because I think the increase year over year was from 8% to 10%, which I was surprised to see that much property value increase over a year.
That's by the county assessor.
County assessor and the state assessor together project what the values are going to be.
I'm surprised to see it go on eventually saturate, it's going to kick in, I don't think you're going to get that year-over-year increase, but that's just my.
Yeah, well, it's a game of predicting the future and.
So we have to go by what they predict.
Because I was afraid that you might have a shortfall by the fourth or fifth year of the levy. That's my expectation.
We always worry about that.
Is mine? Is there anything else about you that we should know in order to better consider your candidacy?
I'm extremely humbled. I have, came from a poor family and I'm not trying to make you guys cry at all, as I showed in my, in my application in lieu of going to a four-year college where my dad was going to get a student, a college loan from her, from his employer, I opt out, going to work full-time and go to school part-time, took me nine years to get my BS in electrical engineering. When I finished, I had enough work experience that allowed me to continue with it and I am here where I am now from that, with no student debt. Unfortunately, far better shape than I am, I would have been if I would have gone to college with a debt and carried, carried that on. I provide my opinion, however, I do also listen to people's thoughts and that always my opinion will win for lack of a better word or description, but a compromise idea can also prevail and become a win-win situation for everyone.
I'm recording there.
All right, did you want to go back to those couple of questions?
Yeah, I'm still thinking about it.
Oh, okay.
No, I'm still thinking about the strengths and weaknesses, unfortunately, I'm going to be plucking them from the midair because since I've owned Litter since September 2017, I haven't been involved reading, understanding, the only thing I did understand was eventually the strike was able to get dissolved and then the teachers came back. So there must have been some type of good positive outcome on that one, but then the non-school employees were on strike after that, shortly, shortly thereafter. So hopefully the financial situation of everyone got calmed down and the school can see success from now on. Unfortunately, I've been thinking and I honestly will, can I provide you an honest answer to both of your questions to make you feel like I know what I'm talking about? I'll tell you.
Sure.
I'm not going to.
No, that's fine.
Fabricate.
No, that's fine, appreciate your honesty.
What questions do you have for us?
Well, one of the questions I was going to ask was the levy percent amounts that was shown, but does, I was just curious on how you got to 8 to 10% year over year. I understand that I'm new to this area, but I also bring other concepts that have been proven in where I came from, which is Florida, my current employer, which I'll tell you, I work for Carnival Cruise Line out there, which is the owner of the Miami Heat, so we're able to leverage the sports as well as the community to provide 15 scholarships per year, per year, so they can get four-year colleges for each student, for 15 students each year, but they have to start from an earlier stage and go through the whole program and then graduate after that. One year we did 16 because they couldn't pick, narrow it onto 15, but that's what we worked on. Previously, I also did the junior achievement program, which was the precursor to the college scholarships and then they stopped that in lieu of this new program. Unfortunately, due to my job title, I couldn't join and participate in that, so that was one bad thing I hated about that program. You needed to be a manager and above, I was one level below.
To be like a junior.
To be part of the mentor.
Oh, the mentor.
The mentor.
To be a manager, to be a junior chief, right?
No, no, to be the part of the scholarship program.
Oh, right, right.
In fact, your, the person that is, what we're filling the vacancy for, he was very involved in junior treatment.
Genius too.
You are too, you're involved.
Thanks for having me on the local Southwest Washington committee.
Our company in Doral, Florida, which is where they locate, they're really community, they even have a school that they sponsor just off-site and most of the employees, kids go to that school, so it makes it easy for them to work and also have kids there. I think it's from elementary and middle school, I almost said junior high, that's how, that's how old I am.
I'm that old too. Is it's IT for Carnival?
Yes.
Remotely?
Yes.
Wiki talk shop for a while, like was trained in electrical engineering, took me 30 years to get my degree and it was finally history by that, by the time that was done, but technical jobs are fun.
Well, see, one of the things that I've achieved going to school that long, first of all, I was working in, as an engineer too, so I was able to get job experiences. When I was getting towards a later on of my degree, I've realized that everything was going to software, everything was becoming CAD program and all that, so I switched all of my electus from analog circuitry to computerized, like, so I took Ada, Pascal and all that, so I was able to get a minor computer science on top of my BS in, in, in electrical engineering, since everything was all becoming program automation.
You are rare, an engineer who can code.
Yeah, I can code.
Those, those don't exist very often, I think I know, well, I know three now. So, there's that. Did we cover all the questions that you wanted to come back to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm extremely flexible with my work hours, trust me.
Okay.
That's how I was able to do real estate too, by the way.
Yeah.
I'm very good at time management. I was one of the few people that probably used phone as modem and I was able to go be offline, Wi-Fi, that was a version of Wi-Fi, phone as modem, since 1996, so I was able to be connected always with my computer, which is bigger than yours, by the way. So.
Good old dial-up, huh?
Good old dial-up.
So how many hours per week do you guys use as approximate?
I would say, what, eight to 10, depending on.
That's, that's nothing, I can do that, I can do that in my sleep, I can do that in my sleep.
Plus that there's time for, you know, study and, yeah, reading.
You basically write Tuesdays off, that's school board day.
Fortunately, a lot of our stuff, besides tours of the schools and meetings with community members, our meetings are usually in the evenings, they start about 5:30 in the evening and sometimes we can go pretty late depending on what's going on, but you're guaranteed to at least be here till 8:30, 8:00, 8:30.
You know, and then just depending on, you know, we oftentimes are involved in other community activities and either sit on boards or are involved in different organizations in town, so we are involved in different capacities in different things.
Lunches.
Go to lunches and different, yeah, but mostly it's, we're at different schools, touring the schools, visiting classrooms.
Would, would, would anyone on the board be allowed to talk to the students and speak to them about their pain and their, and their success and all that?
Yeah, and we actually, we don't just show up in schools and pull a student aside or whatever, but we like to, we have breakfast with the board and we, two of us will go and have breakfast with students, high school students and oftentimes we have those kind of conversations and, and, yeah, it just depends, but yeah. And then we're at, at elementary schools, we'll be in classrooms seeing what they're doing and, or we'll be at the, at fun things like the Green Eggs and Ham events, which is coming up and, you know, seeing what the kids are learning and hear them talk about their favorite Dr. Seuss books and meeting with parents who are there to, to be with their kids during those events and we're at concerts and the plays and.
Sporting events?
Sporting events and every year at graduation, we are at every graduation and we hand out those diplomas and shake the hands of those students and that's always a really exciting and fun time and I thought, you know, at first when I did it was really fun, I thought, gosh, but you know, we never get tired of it, it's really.
It's a very exhausting weekend.
It's an exhausting, it's a lot of kids, but it's something we look forward to every year.
Can I ask other questions? What kind of interactions do you have with the business community?
Well, I, I'm a business owner, so in my, my work life and I am a member of the Downtown Association and so I'm there, of course, in my capacity as a business owner, but I also represent the board and bring that perspective on different things I'm involved in, many of us are involved in the chamber, Rotary, and you're always kind of wearing two hats because you always want to make sure. We have a lot of interaction with businesses that pertains to, we have internships with the business community for our students, we have a health and biosciences high school that's very.
Oh, you do have that.
Oh, yes, and we have our Cascadia Tech Academy, which has a multitude of business-oriented.
Are the businesses limited to just the Vancouver School District or does it overflow to the other areas or to other states?
It overflows. Cascadia is a nine-district consortium.
Yeah, so we've got our district, Evergreen School District and then Vancouver School District and all the districts in Southwest Washington.
Participate.
Participate in it and there's, in fact, today, I'm before, when I was walking to my car to come to here, there's a restaurant, small, really cool restaurant next to my business and he was telling, the owner was telling me how he needs a couple of sous chefs and he said, I'm having a hard time finding, and I'm, I started talking to him about our culinary arts program at Cascadia and I said, you should connect, let me help you get connected with them because I think you might be able to find who you're looking for out of our students and graduates from that program and I was kind of explaining and he got so excited because he said, you know, so many of these older, more experienced think they know everything and I just want someone, because he is an amazing chef and a kid would do great in there and would learn a lot from him and it would be a great place for them to work, so he was all excited, so they, we have a lot to offer our students and we have a lot to offer the community and those partnerships are really important to us and so.
Cascadia offers 15 different programs.
That's, that's good, I like, I like to see that, that's how I was able to find that engineering was my calling and in my high school, well, when I grad, when I graduated high school, there were four trimesters, not semesters how they are now, so it's like four nine, nine-week periods instead of two eighteen, so each trimester we were able to go to machine shop, mechanics, engineer, electronics and drafting, then our 11th and 12th year, two, two classes per year, we were able to specialize in one of them and I got. And I got able to go to electronics. So I was able to know that, yes, that's what I like, as opposed to, you go to college, oh, I go to accounting and realize, oh, shoot, I really don't like numbers. And then you just waste, you know, you just spun your wheels. So it allows the students to, to put their, to get their feet wet.
Yeah, I think that's an important goal for all of us, is that we want to provide as many opportunities as we can for our students. So that way they can make really good decisions about what their interest is. Because you're right, there's a lot of kids that will go out and get the degree in the wrong thing or not really know, and we want our kids to be happy and passionate about the work that they do. Eventually, find something that interests them. They're even offering a flight program where they learn how to be mechanics on airplanes.
Oh, yes, yes.
As well as flight at our Cascadia Tech Academy, they have a partnership with Pearson. And so they train the students also how to be pilots.
Good, good, good. Because that's the only way you can get them to go, not everyone's going to go to four-year college. And, and, and we're really, and you know, what's really funny is when you talk to other individuals from other countries. Since I work in an IT, I get a lot, I work a lot of individual from H-one B visa, which is they don't have the same core classes that we do. They just, they're, they're, they're basically four-year program is shrunken to two years, three years. And they don't take the social sciences, the humanities, those classes that we're required to take. And that, it's fine for, to shape an individual, but to actually make them productive in a, in an IT career or in a computer science degree, uh, career, it's not really necessary.
Yeah, it's something that we've been really taking a, a close look at as pathways and how kids get to where they need to be and what, what career or technical decisions that they can make along the way.
But for that to occur, you have to have business to line up because business requires a four-year degree. If you get a, a, a shorter version of four-year down to two-year to get an associate, so they're allowed to get a bachelor's afterward. The employer must accept that.
Internships are very crucial and very important partnerships that we have to have with our business community. We want our kids to have those experiences.
And the shortages now and for the foreseeable future are sitting there in the jobs that require the two-year degree. Or the certificates and experience that you might get in an apprenticeship and so forth.
See, I, I, I think that if you can get a two-year degree and during the summertime do the internship for that specialty. By the time you finish that, it's a year, you can work to that company that sponsored you for lack of a better word. And then go to work full-time and then go to school part-time and that, that will take you four years instead of two years. So in the overt window of six years, you would have already graduated with no school debt. As well as two-year degree, uh, two-year experience, and then you have the world to yourself.
And a living wage job.
And they can really attest to that.
That's exactly what we're working on.
But the only way you can get that to work is the employer has to accept that as a, as a acceptable degree, as a acceptable path.
We have that exact thing happening right now at SEH America, which is a wafer tech company. And they are, we have the internships with our students. And then they've been hiring the students once they graduate. And then they bring them in and then they put them in a, to a more of an apprentice situation.
Yes.
And now they're paying for them to go to college and then it rolls on, you know, and so it's
What's Ben's position there? Is he like?
Well, he's like
Vice President of
Vice President of something.
He's like the head of that with American Opera.
Then another sector that has to be on, on board is the night school for college. Because one of the problems I had when I was going to school, night school, especially on my fourth year, the courses that I need, like microprocessor, they weren't being offered that time, they were offered only in the daytime. And my employer at that time allowed me to come into work at seven, leave at eight, come back at eleven and work till eight P.M. So I make sure I have eight hours.
So you could get classes?
Yes, I could get classes, because that was the only way. However, the, the college has to now be on board, so they can get all the right courses to be offered nighttime. So the students can go to school and work.
We have, we work with like Clark College here, and then we also are working with WSU Vancouver campus. Because of that, so depending on the program. So we're trying to create these kind of straight pathways through the system from not only just K-12, but all the way through into the college level. So it's very complex and, you know, it encompasses a lot of different industries and a lot of different, um, the schools and, but we, it's coming together. It's, it's getting there. It's exciting.
It's possible for a motivated student today to finish an associate's degree. He'll transfer to a four-year university and by the time he graduates, or she graduates as a senior, my daughter did that. And now she's going to finish out a linguistics degree in something like two years and a trimester of a Western Washington University instead of the four years. It's, it's going to save her fifty thousand dollars. That program exists statewide, you have to be pretty motivated, but when you are, it really works out well.
Yeah, we do, we do have a number of students that graduates with, graduate with their associates while they're in high school.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
They go to school half, um, mainstream high school half a day and then they go to, well, most of them go to Clark College. For the other half, then they get their associates under junior, senior year.
State career.
It's, it's cool, yeah, so.
And if they get the right degree, they can get a good paying job and they can
Yeah, we know there's a lot of work left to do in that area, but
But it's, yeah, we just keep, keep it up.
All right, any other questions or anything for us?
One of the things that I saw, getting back to, and I saw this as an issue, not as from what I saw. Uh, my, my, my wife was doing the bizarre show at, I think, Mountain View High School, which is, which is lived nearby in, in the district, I think.
Yes, it is.
And they had a wall of fame on that, by the cafeteria. And the, it went up to two thousand and six, they didn't have anything past that, two thousand and six or two thousand and eight. So for almost ten to twelve years.
You mean on the high side of two thousand and six or the low side of two thousand and six?
No, it had everything from like, let's say, two thousand and one or nineteen ninety-nine.
If, if this is the one across from the entrance to the auditorium, then there are students with photographs from my graduating class, eighty-seven, all the way up to oh, six.
Two thousand and six.
But it didn't have anything from, it, it didn't have anything after that. So I don't know if, I don't know if the students stopped achieving anything or it had to be continue on another wall or something.
They may have ran out of room. We are building a new high school for them, so maybe we'll have to
No, so I, I was just wondering.
I don't remember, I can only guess that it correlates with the beginnings of the recession.
I don't know, because
Usually there's always like
They've got boards.
He was strong in music, he was strong in sports.
It was the board that showed people even in the political, it, it, I, I remember one student, it was in the Obama's administration. I remember somewhere in the, in the middle.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen what you're talking about before. I've seen the photos because I've recognized a few of the people from
But then it stopped at two thousand and six or two thousand and eight for like ten to twelve years.
Unless they did it or do it at a different program, but
I mean, that may be an issue where
We'll have to ask.
They haven't succeeded or anything.
Or they've got it in their
Oh, I'm sure there's plenty of students that have been There's been like national scholar winners there in the last several years.
Seems like every year there's one or two perfect SAT scores.
They've had three students like Boom 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 that got hundred percents on the SATs.
Yeah.
Yeah, year after year.
Yeah, three of them.
I'll never do that.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, we'll check that out. Now I'm, now I'm curious.
We know they've done, there's been a lot of achievements out of that school, so it's
Maybe they call it something different.
They may, or have it on a different spot or something, who knows?
I think different schools do different things, um, because I know like at Heritage, they do like a, like senior boy and girl of the year or something. So it might just be called something different or maybe they have something different.
We'll have to find out, yeah. All right.
Thank you for coming in.
It's really nice to meet you.
You're welcome. Good luck on your search.
Thank you so much.
All right, board of guys.
Well, she's already here. Thank you for coming in so late.
You're very welcome. Thanks for having me.
Okay, what's rolling?
All right, Rachel, so thank you for coming in this evening. We're going to introduce ourselves and then we'll get started. We're going to ask you a series of questions. At the end, there'll be an opportunity for you to ask us questions as well, okay? I'm Julie, I'm the board chair.
I'm Rob, I've been on the board for about five years.
I'm Victoria Bradford, I've been on the board for almost twenty years.
And I'm Jenny Crenwalton, I just finished my first year.
Nice to meet you all.
Appreciate you coming in.
So we'll just go, um, one person at a time, take turns asking questions. Rob's going to kick us off here.
Question number one. Please tell us why you decided to apply for this position.
Well, community service is something that has been important to me basically my whole life. From collecting cans on Halloween as part of trick-or-treating when I was a child. To my current job, I work for the government and I have my entire adult life. And that's something that's, I don't know, part of my identity, I think, giving back to my community. And I feel like I can do more and I should do more. And my children are the light of my life. And their education, I mean, my education had a profound impact on me. And so their education, I know will have a profound impact on them. And I want to be a part of that and I can think of no better way to make sure that their education is the best possible way than to be part of the school board at the schools that they go to.
So what strengths would you bring to our board?
Um, tenacious and very dedicated and, um, I have a very strong work ethic and when I commit to something, I give it my all. So, um, I have a, a lot of expertise in fields that I know. But I'm very willing to say when I don't know something and figure it out and learn where I need to go to figure that out. And or basically I can, I'm very resourceful.
So what are areas that you would like, or would imagine that the board would set goals, that you would like to see them setting goals?
That's a little tough one. I think that the board's done great things. I think we could set goals in, um, you know, technology, I know we just passed the technology levy, which I think will be very helpful for that. I think we could set goals in better communication with the public. I think that communication is, is key, especially with getting buy-in and, um, having the public take part in their schools and, um, they're essentially they're, you know, the children are our future and they're the ones who are going to be taking care of us when we're older. And so I think that it's, I don't know if more people were here when, earlier, but it's an open meeting. And I only see a couple of people here. And I didn't see anything advertised about this meeting on Facebook. And so things like communication in that regard, maybe more advertising, announcements in our schools, newsletters, things like that. I think that is one way that we could get more, um, I'd like to see a lot more, um, community involvement, I think, in our school boards. I think, I'm not sure that any, that most parents would be able to name any of our school board members.
You're probably right.
But, um, I think that's, that's, that's too bad. You all seem like really nice people and I think you guys have a really important job. And I think that our parents would like to know more. And I know that I had to go and find stuff out and, you know, be an active participant and ask more people and ask people who I know who are teachers and, and kind of figure out how to get to meetings and where they were at and how everything worked. And I had to do that by research and spending time on it. And no one really introduced me to it when my daughter started school in Evergreen. And that was, I think that's something that maybe we could make resolutions about or kind of figure out more of a way to get more public involvement because then we can have, instead of suddenly, you know, public uprising when something negative seeming happens, we could have people feeling like they're engaged and involved in the process from the beginning. Or at least feel like they know about what's happening. And I think that's always better. So I'd like to see some goal setting around that.
What experiences have you had on other boards or in management or other leadership positions? And how do you see this role as different?
Well, probably the most recent experience I've had, um, was as president of my office's guild. Until we de-certified, I was the president, so then the head of the executive board, um, of the attorney, the prosecutor's guild. And, uh, so we had a lot of very strict bylaws. And so, you know, on the subject of communication, that was very limited, what we were allowed to speak about and not allowed to speak about. And, um, my role there was a lot of negotiation and, um, with, um, with like pending lawsuits or pending complaints. And I imagine this role would be a little bit different in that hopefully I wouldn't have any role in like the legal litigation part of things, but more possibly negotiation for contracts or, um, you know, like the teacher contracts, staff contracts. But also, um, so I do have experience with negotiating, so it, that could be helpful. But, um, it would be different and, and at least maybe the end goal would be a little bit something different. And, um, as opposed to, um, maybe dealing with an upsetting topic, I think that this would be dealing with a happier topic and maybe more of a positive, something that I think would have a more positive impact on our society than, than the guild activities that I got to see did.
Who do you feel are the top four issues facing the Evergreen School District?
Well, number one's pretty easy. I think funding and the McCleary decision. The legislature really kind of did a number, I think, on all school districts. Unfortunately with that, I think we were really lucky that our levy passed. Most recently, I know, for example, Hawkinson's didn't and they have another chance at it, but, um, you know, so I know we're really lucky and it passed, um, but let's say we're not so lucky in a couple of years. That, I still think that that's going to be this ongoing issue that we're going to be facing all the time. And, um, so I would always just say that's, that's number, that's number one. I would say technology, I still think that we have a lot of other schools, um, you know, bigger cities like Seattle, um, definitely. I coach a mock trial team and so I, I go around and I see other schools, um, at like state competitions we've gone to a couple of years and the technology use that other schools have from bigger metropolitan areas, um, in our state. And then also I have teacher friends, um, from other parts of our country. And I know the technology capabilities that other classrooms have and we're a bit behind in some other, in some places. We're a bit ahead of other places as well, so not to say that at all that we're, we're so far behind. So hopefully our technology levy will also be helpful with that. I think that, I think we've all seen recently the vaccination rate is definitely a prevalent problem. I mean, that's something that's been a concern of mine for years. But we've all seen, you know, kind of how difficult that can be, um, what a difficult issue that can be more recently because of our measles outbreak. But I think other, you know, health issues as well facing our children, you know, mental health issues, um, obesity, drug use, um, sex education, things like that, that are, you know, kind of hot topics, hot button topics. Bullying, social media for children. Things that can be hard for parents to talk about their children with or hard for us to kind of keep up with. Are things that we need to keep ahead of with our children. And I don't know if I gave you four or
I was just, you gave us more than four.
Sorry about that, that's okay.
I see four. Three, four, five, or six? That's a good list.
Clearly math is not my thing.
Oh, that's my question, right?
Your turn.
What kind of time commitment can you make to the work of the board? We meet regularly, school board meetings usually twice a month. We meet regularly, school board meetings usually twice a month. We have additional workshops. We like to get out into the community. We like to visit schools. Sometimes there's meetings in the morning, middle of the day. Are you able to commit to that type of work? Is your work schedule allow it?
Yes, I do work full-time, but I probably have the most flexible job in my office. Cause I'm head of the appellate unit, so I don't appear in court regularly. I, most of my work is writing and research. And so I get to do, I can do a lot of that, not all of it, but a lot of it from a laptop. And so I do have more flexibility than other people in my office. I also have support, my husband, my extended family also live in the Evergreen School District. I have a brother and his wife. And my parents also both live just a 10-minute drive from my house. So they're, they're very helpful with my children as well. And so I was expecting regular meetings, some special meetings, either weekly. And then I, I would understand we probably have some workshops, some conferences, some trainings, visits. I had a significant time commitment when I was like, when I was the guild president. And I would say easily 15 hours a week, probably I gave to that. So I don't have any of those hours committed at this moment. So I'm not sure how if you guys would get, estimate a number of hours a week you give, but...
I would say between eight to 10 hours a week.
Okay.
Eight to 10 legislative season for the ledge rep, maybe.
Yeah, doing research and reading.
Research and reading. Yeah, eight to 10, 10 to 15, bless your whole heart.
On the time of year also. Cause it's like right now, we do meetings for like school improvement plans and we meet at all the schools.
So it's more regularly or maybe like right before?
For July is glorious.
Winter break, it's not, or July, well, not really July. I think July is busy because.
Well, that's too July.
We have planning and, I mean, just, it depends on like, like June, super busy because it's graduations. And beginning of the school year is usually a busier time because, you know, we're in schools, busy on the first day of school and things, things are getting kicked off. Then I think January, January through the end of the school year kind of is pretty steady with commitments.
December's quiet.
December's quiet, except for usually, and then November's busy because we have conference. So it kind of just depends.
So I mean, go on a extended weekend to either, depending on which year, to Spokane or Bellevue. For usually Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then come home Sunday.
For conference.
For a conference where we're in training all day long, every day.
But it, yeah, it, it kind of adds and flows.
Yeah, okay. That all sounds like something I can handle.
And it's not, most of the time, a lot of the things that we do, we can't have more than three of us at, otherwise we have to post a, a public meeting. So it's kind of, we kind of divide and conquer. Two of us usually do a lot of, you know, around. So it's not everything we all have to be at, but.
Yeah, like every time the school puts on something, we're not, you're never expected to attend every single thing. We have a lot of schools, right? A lot of events. But we'll all try to find something that, you know, maybe is in our area or that interests us that we want to be supportive to. Like, you know, sometimes the concerts or different events of the school.
Or things, yeah, in the community that, you know.
All of us work full-time, so it's not like, you know, we're all, we all have jobs and other obligations and things. So we try to, you know, just make it fit, so.
I'd be able to do that then.
Name two strengths and two areas that you see that maybe the district needs some improvement on?
The district. Well, I've said it a couple of times already, but funding is a weakness. And I think, well, what's popping in my head are some strengths. I think some strengths are kind of clarity of vision. I think that the district has a really good, maybe this is the board too, but has a really good kind of value of putting the student first. And believing that every student is teachable and that every student can learn and can receive a great education through our school system. And kind of, the impression I get is that we're united in our belief of that. And that's what I get through that. And then also, I think we do a really good job of setting the tone of our expectations for the children in our school through our, like our school mantras and our rules and expectations and kind of attitude, expectations that our children have at their schools. And so I think those are some things that our district does very well. And I, I like what I see there. And, you know, every district, I think, funding would probably be number one on the list. You know, every, it's hard to say what our district in particular does worse than other districts. You know, every district could do better on extracurricular activities, more arts, more cultural events or activities. Even though I think we're doing a good job of trying, you know, to, to give access to those. And we have more access than other schools I've seen to those. But I can't ever say I think we have enough, so.
Do you believe that once the school board has made a decision, all board members should support the will of the majority?
Publicly, yes. I think that it is like parents and their children. Let's say my husband and I don't always agree on how much TV time our kids should get. Or the kids might be asking both of us, hey, can I have dessert? Can we have dessert? And I might be about to say yes while he says no. I'm not about to go back on what he just said in front of them. We're not about to show that we are divided, because we're not about to show that they can divide us and conquer. I think that, so if he says no, then I say, your dad already told you no. If I say yes, he tells them, your mom said yes, you can do it. Or your mom said no, you don't get to then come around and ask me, you know? And we're careful because they're getting to that age. Our daughter's almost seven, our oldest. And getting to the point where, you know, she's learning. Sometimes if she doesn't tell us that she already asked the other person, that she might get a different answer. So we're starting to learn that we have to, right?
Warms your heart a little.
No, no, I'm just feeling the pain here.
I did say, have you asked, have you asked your dad yet, you know? And we need to make sure that she hasn't already gone to the other parent. So we, we started doing that and letting her know that she needs to not ask both of us the same question. And she is learning luckily, she's a really good kid. But, but we have had a little bit of, mom said yes, dad said no. And then we're like, which one of you did you ask? You know, and we, we go with whichever one was asked first, which clearly is always the one who said no. It's asked first, so then that's what happens. But I think that basically, once an entity as a majority vote has made a decision, then that's what, you know, that's what publicly the majority is, is what needs to do it. I think that it, it, when you're making a public statement as a board, not as individual members, but as a board, then you need to say what the board has decided and what the board believes and what the board is going to move forward with. And I think that's what's appropriate when you're an entity as opposed to individuals on that entity.
If appointed, do you plan to run for this position in the November 2019 school board election?
Yes.
Are there particular community connections that you have or constituencies that you would represent as a school board member? And do you see any of your current, sorry, do you see any of your current connections or associations as a conflict of interest?
I don't believe I would have any conflict of interest with my job.
I think you might have already answered this, but I'll ask anyway. Does your family support your candidacy?
Yes, I do.
Sounds like you've got lots of support.
Yes, I do.
Do you regularly vote in school district elections and did you vote in the most recent levy election?
Yes, yes. My husband, I made my husband vote too. I mailed his ballot form.
Is there anything else about you that we should know in order to better consider your candidacy?
I think he should know that I'm someone who's very dependable. That when I commit to something, I follow it through with it. And that volunteerism is something, I mean, that's an award that I've earned at my office a couple of times, I think. Because that's something that I'm just, I become known for where I work and teams that I work on. It's a person who's willing to go the extra mile, a person who's willing to do something hard or that no one else really wants to be the immediate one to jump in to. And usually just because I really care about seeing a good result happen. And especially when I care about what the actual issue is. I'm really going to put my heart and soul into it. So I think that's what you should, you would get if you selected me.
What questions could you have for us?
What do you all find the hardest part of being a school board member is?
Second question.
Well, I think one of the hardest things is because we're elected officials and it's considered a public meeting if any of us, if more than two of us talk. So sometimes it's very difficult to do the work of the board without being able to have that communication. And, you know, you can have, I can have one-on-one conversations with everyone, but as soon as it's considered a public meeting. And so I think sometimes that makes it very difficult to do the work that's needed to do. Because we can only, as Jenny pointed out earlier, if there's three of us, then we can't, you know, we can't really do the work. And so we can only be together and have, do the work of the board when we're all together and it's a meeting that's been announced. So that makes it hard.
It would make it hard.
Especially if it's something sensitive. You know, there's some times we have things that come up and you'd like to be able to just see what other people are thinking and you just can't. So, yeah, that's a little challenging. I think sometimes to, you know, sometimes we have to make decisions that are really hard. That our heart wants to go in one direction, but the, either the logistics or the money or, or whatever makes it impossible. And that's really hard because we really want to tell people yes about, you know, especially when it's going to be better for the family or, and for sure if it's better for the student. But sometimes, you know, we don't have the capacity, say, in a building or in a program or whatever. And it's just really maddening when we can't do it. And it really is hard, it, it really is upsetting to have to do that. So I would say that's difficult. And it's, it's really hard to have challenges funding-wise when we know that our kids and our families need things and we don't have the capacity to do what we want to do. That's hard.
It's hard to learn about loss. We lose a child every other year or so, every year. Each circumstance is so different and tragic and I can't talk about it, right? So you carry that around in your heart. Try and think of policy ways to mitigate it. And sometimes there's no really good answer for those kinds of things. So that's hard.
I guess, you know, we never want to talk about the, the bad parts of doing this. So I think as the newest board member, having been very involved in the community and doing other volunteer positions and doing good and seeing kind of the fruits of your labor in, in what you're doing. It was, and it still is quite an adjustment for me because as a school board, we're not, you know, put out there as, look at all the good stuff we're doing. The only time people hear about us is when there's bad things going on. And that can be hard because it seems like sometimes you're dealing with more of the bad stuff and the issues and other things. And you kind of get a little derailed, I guess, a little disappointed because you're not seeing the good parts. They're there, but it's, it's just kind of overshadowing over here. And then when you can kind of get out and step back and look at, you know, what we're doing for the entire school district and having a team where we, you know, collaborate and support each other, it makes it a lot easier. But it definitely was a shock to, to know all the, the warm and fuzzies that I was doing over in the nonprofit world, you know, and all my volunteer stuff, to really, this really is get into the, the weeds. And you're making decisions for the sixth largest school district in the state of Washington. And it's not something to just kind of, I mean, it definitely takes dedication and a love for the district and what we do.
But it's definitely, compared to other kind of elected positions, what the decisions we make, we see the results. And I love that. That's what's kept me on the board. Is seeing, like, we've talked numerous times tonight about when we, because we hand out the diplomas to our graduates. And a lot of boards don't do that, but we do and we've always done it. And it's one of our favorite times of the year. And to see those kids walk across the stage and we know in our district, a diploma means something here. And it's, it's exciting to see those kids' faces and how excited they are to start that next phase of their life. And to know, you know, like I know what things were like 20 years ago. And then to see, knowing how things have changed and how much more, yeah, exciting school it is in Evergreen School District over the course of that time. It's exciting to see the changes and how many more opportunities our students have than they had. And, and things have changed since, all of them, even in the last year, things have happened. So it's, that piece is so satisfying.
I mean, what other volunteer position can you, well, I mean, elected positions, I guess we are. That you get to go, yeah, you get to walk into a school and into a, a classroom and just sit down on the floor and start interacting with, with children. You know, I've, I've gone under drawing easels with another kid because that's where she was doing her work and wanted to show me. So we're under this, you know, this easel thing and we're doing her work. I mean, it's just, there's no other place that you get to re-energize yourself with going into a school and, and getting down on the level with the students and to see what the work that they're doing or to walk into a, a fifth grade classroom and get invited into their mindful circle and their restorative practices. And, and to watch these fifth graders go through this practice and just be completely blown away. And they even included us and we participated. And it was, it, it is a, it is a, a very rewarding job, but it is also, it can be very, very challenging and hard at times too.
That's a great way to sum it up. It's kind of like being a parent. Hardest job you'll ever do, but the most rewarding?
Close second, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it kind of is.
What do you think the most rewarding thing is at the show?
Most rewarding? Well, I go with the culture parade every single time I get that question. Yeah, you, you put, how many, 3,000 third graders in the open space at, at Tor Vancouver? And I think my first year, they said the pledge of allegiance together and I was just blown away, just like, wow.
All dressed in their?
All dressed in their different cultural costumes and, you know, carrying their heritage around on these placards. And it's, it's always just one of the best experiences of the year. We got our music night. I'm telling you what's good and not what's difficult. We got our music night when the performing groups come in.
She asked you what's the most rewarding.
Oh, rewarding. What's rewarding, yeah, is that, is seeing those moments where you can see joyful rigor going on. And it's really easy to see. I was, I was in Michael Iverson's choir class, the day that he gave his final tests for two of his classes at Union High School. And he was so excited to have somebody in, he's showing me all these things and teaching him real music theory and stuff that... I'm a, I'm a graduate of this system. I graduated Mountain View back in 87. And the instruction has gotten better. He talked about how wonderful it was to have the technology in the class and how they could use it to learn how to sing. And dang, that was good to see. It was good to see an excited teacher, excited about the things that we were able to approve. Yeah.
That's great. Do you have anything?
Well, graduation is my most favorite event. But I was going to say that I have always been like really big on making sure that we provide... that we provide lots of opportunities for our students, no matter what it is, if it's athletics or music or, you know, dance clubs. And I feel um that we are really blessed in Evergreen that has a system that creates that culture of lots of opportunities for our kids. Because I'm a firm believer that if kids have something that interests them and they can, you know, hold on to and be involved with, with. They'll do so much better throughout their educational career and then as they move on in life. So it gives me really great satisfaction to watch kids or hear from kids that are excited about the stuff that they're doing in their schools. Some that make a difference, like your key clubs and some of those groups that are out doing the good works in the community. Um and just really seeing passion driven in those students and then knowing that they're gonna take that as they become community members themselves.
Sounds like you guys get to actually feel like you have a real effect on children.
Yeah.
One of the um I think most powerful uh experiences in this last year for me was the student walkout. For gun safety. Um and we actually happened to be, I was visiting one of the schools that was already scheduled at the time, one of our middle schools. And the district, you know, as as a whole, there was, you know, basically, we had a position that we don't encourage kids leaving the classroom. But basically, you know, we're, we're. So there were security and extra police just to make sure that the kids were safe, um that they weren't going to busy roads. And it, standing at the middle school, we all came out just to make sure to direct them and we never even had to. Not one kid came out to the front of the school, they all, it was all planned, they went to the track. They formed a huge circle around the entire track, they held hands and they sat silent. And to sit there, I just got goosebumps, to sit there and stand, stand there and watch them with the superintendent. And to watch the beautiful moment in that and to, and for them to know that, one, they were safe. We were, we were there to make sure that they were safe. But also the fact that these twelve, thirteen-year-olds had put this together. And it was so peaceful that you would have had, never had any idea that, you know, this was a huge event for them. Um but it just, it really made me proud of the district and our students and the fact that we give them a voice and we want them to use it. And that is one of our guiding principles is that we want our students to be part of their community and their citizenship. And to participate and and to have moments like that. We don't want to restrict them, we want them to have their, to have a voice and to use it.
And to have it be heard.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
I think that's beautiful, that's great.
That was a neat day.
It was.
Yeah.
It was an exceptional day and, yeah, one I will never forget. So even, and that's kind of what I said, you know, there are a lot of hard moments, but there's moments that like that, that make it all worth it.
One, I have to tell you, one of the, one of our favorite activities, we have this thing called principal for a day. And we have, we invite people in the community to come in, like, like the mayor and different other, the people in the community. Heads of different companies or organizations, just whomever. And they'll come in and they'll spend the morning with, at a school, with the principal there. And they just do the day along and then we meet with them after and have lunch with them. And they tell us what they've observed and we ask them, you know, what did you see that, you know, you observed? And what did you like, or is there anything you think that concerned you, whatever, we're open, we just want to hear. And it is, every single time, there's, they're always so stunned how school has one changed since they were in school. And even the ones that have had kids or have kids in school, just spending that much time in a school with the principal. But it's the older people that really tickle me because they are, one, usually quite amazed at what our kids do. And how um orderly they they usually are and not to say that, you know, there's things that go on at school, or you mean. But they're amazed at the level of work that our kids could do, how proficient they are in the things that they're doing. And just um, they're just, they're just really amazed. It it always just tickles me how much they are often just stunned.
It's like the honored citizens tour at Hila.
I know.
Because they really get excited about the work that those students are doing over there. It it's really fun to take that group through there.
They're shocked, I mean, there's, there they, there they see high school students like practically practicing medicine. I mean, they're just, it's pretty, it's pretty entertaining actually to to go on those tours and to hear what they have to say after. It's it's funny.
There are four ER booths at Hila High with the mannequins that make noises and um emit substances and things.
Just like at nursing school.
Just like at nursing school.
Yeah, awesome.
I think it's actually better equipped than Cascadia.
It is a fun place to go, yeah, but yeah. So those are things that are kind of entertaining and stuff that just to see people's reaction. Because they just can't believe school is like that now, yeah.
And we've got a class that teaches math by doing construction. They build a half a house at two of our high schools and then they put them together for Habitat. And then the the houses are then put on onto a Habitat site, so they're teaching the students math.
How cool.
Through construction.
How cool idea.
Yeah. So, and we can go on for hours.
Oh, yeah.
Talking about all the great things that.
I appreciate you guys sharing some of the fun things with me and some of the hard things too.
Any other questions for us?
No, I just wanted to get a feel for what it was like to be on the board and it sounds like you, I mean, coming back for twenty years. You really enjoyed it. There must be something you really enjoyed about it and you kind of, you volunteered it, you know, that it wasn't really rewarding. And it sounds like you, the enjoying, enjoyment part seems to far outweigh.
Oh, it does.
The hard part for you all.
Hard work, good results.
That was all, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
My oldest daughter is named Rachel.
Okay, good name.
Spelled exactly the right way.
Oh, it is, wonderful, good job.
I thought you were gonna say like you did at that time.
Thank you, have a great night.
No, that's, that's our job.